So David, if you're ready. Wait for your sign.
Yep, let's go.
Welcome. I'd like to call the November 19th, 2020 West Sacramento Planning Commission meeting to order. Thank you for joining us this evening. We continue to meet via teleconference pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order N 2920, by which members of the Planning Commission and staff are participating via live video conference to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. Members of the public have been invited to watch the meeting via wave cable on our local Channel 20 or streaming online through the city's website. Tonight's agenda and all agenda item materials are available on the city's website on the Planning Commissioner page. All public comments submitted by 5:00 PM via email to the Planning Commissioner clerk are available for consideration and are posted on the city's website, along with the agenda and link to the live streaming video of this meeting, so that all planning commissioners and community members can see the complete text and submit all information. The Planning Commissioner will, sorry, the Planning Commissioner clerk will note the commenters for each item. So with that, we will proceed with tonight's agenda. First up is General Administration Functions, presentation by the public on matters not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the commission. Mr. Clerk, do we have any comments on public on matters not on the agenda?
There are no comments on this item.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move to a general administration function. Part 1B, Correspondence and Staff Communications from the Planning Commissioner's Secretary, Mr. Towe.
Yes, thank you Chair Lebig. Two items, actually three items real quick to note. Last night's City Council meeting, the council did first reading on our, what the most recent cannabis project. It had no discussion on that. And they also did first reading on the Development Agreement amendments for the River One project, both of those which came before the Planning Commission last month. They didn't have any comments on the other, the River One project also. And I just want to make sure that all the commissioners should have received both an email from Ben and also one from the Clerk's office regarding the application process for continuing to serve on city commissions. The deadline for that has been extended to December 11th, but we encourage everyone to get their applications in right away. I know we've received at least one already, so hopefully we will receive all those shortly. That's all for staff communications at this time.
Thank you, David. That will move on to disclosure of ex parte communications, where planning commissioners should disclose any communications they've had on items on the agenda. Seeing no hands, we're going to move on. And this brings us to the consent agenda, which is consideration and approval of the minutes from the November 5th, 2020 commission meeting.
I will move to adopt the minutes.
Moved by Commissioner Sablon.
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by Commissioner Berliner. Mr. Clerk, can you please do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Berliner. Commissioner Stromfeld.
Obstain.
Commissioner Leonard.
Aye.
Commissioner Sablon.
Aye.
Commissioner Austin.
Aye.
Chair Lebig.
Aye.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to the regular agenda. We have two items on the regular agenda this evening. The first is item number three, which is the Continued Public Hearing Regarding the Proposed Kind Project Multi-Family Development, Washington-Specific Plan Minor Deviations Development Agreement and Consideration of Planning Commission Resolution 20-13 PC. On this one, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Allen. Oh, actually, I'm sorry, before I turn it over to you Kathy. Mr. Clerk, are there any public comments on this item?
There are no public comments on this item.
All right. Thank you. And so Kathy, I'm going to hand this one over to you.
Thanks, Chair Lebig. Good evening to you and also to the members of the commission. The Kind Project is a project consisting of 148 studio apartments, which would be located in two buildings on the corner of 4th and F Street in the Washington-Specific Plan area. Next slide, Ben. The project is located in the waterfront zone, which is intended for high-intensity mixed uses, which capitalize on the city's riverfrontage. In addition to the buildings, the project includes recreational amenities located in the project's outdoor areas, which include items such as ping pong tables, outdoor grills, an outdoor gym, dog area, and veggie planter. The project also includes 39 spaces. Next slide. The project does need a series of entitlements, design review approval, minor deviations from the Washington-Specific Plan. The zoning administrator also has to approve the parking reduction, and there's also a development agreement component. In regards to design review, it's required because the project's located in the Washington-Specific Plan area. The Planning Commission is considering it because there are entitlements required for the project. The project includes two buildings, which are approximately 40 feet in height, and each contains 74 apartments. Of the apartments, 122 of them are 288 square feet and include a mezzanine storage area. And then there are 26 studio apartments, which will be 324 square feet. Design elements for the project include plaster walls with contrasting colors, which will add visual interest, metal railings, metal staircases on the east and west ends of the building. The project also has metal fencing and gates. In addition to the buildings, there are the aforementioned recreational amenities. The project also includes an interim parking lot with 39 parking spaces. The project will be an all-electric project and will be solar-ready. It's going to utilize sustainable building materials and is a sustainable-by-design project, meaning it's built to reduce negative impacts on the environment. The applicant is also requesting minor deviations from the setback requirements. The commission has seen quite a few projects in Washington with similar requirements. This is due to the fact the Washington-Specific Plan was adopted in 1996 and due to its age does not accurately reflect the current goals and policies and land use decisions contained in our new General Plan 2035, which anticipates a much higher infill development. The deviations for this project would allow for the aforementioned high-density development and are very similar, as I said, to other deviations the commission has seen in the Washington area. This project does have a component that is, needs to be approved by the zoning administrator, not the planning commission. That has to do with the parking reduction request. The zoning code requires one space for every unit plus one space for guests. However, the zoning code also allows for 50% reduction in required spaces in Washington. The, with all the deviations there allowed in the zoning code, it actually requires a reduction of 42 spaces. This project is in very close proximity to transit routes, and so we think the reduction is appropriate. We did on October 19th, mail out a notice to zoning administrator action to all property owners within 500 feet of the project, and the comment period closed on November 3rd. The project, the final aspect has to do with the development agreement. And for that portion of staff's presentation, I'm going to pass the baton on to Diane Richards from our Economic Development and Housing Department.
Good evening, Chair Lebig and members of the commission. I'm pleased to be here tonight to discuss the Kind Project. This project has many public benefits that it offers the community, as well as some key terms that I'd like to highlight in the proposed development agreement that's under consideration this evening. I want to thank my colleagues in community development and for their work with us. This has been a result of over a year almost of work with both the Kind investors, as well as city staff from multiple departments. As was mentioned, the Kind Project is, it's a very unique model of providing affordable, but also housing that is attainable through its design, is affordable through its design. It's consistent with the city's climate action framework. It supports transit due to its density and location near major employment centers. And it offers a replicable model for housing production in the city and potentially in the region. I'll mention briefly the ethos of the project, as shared by the developer, and I'm sure I won't do it perfect justice, but the idea behind the name is that the Kind Project will do something kind for the community and in turn will encourage the residents of the Kind Project to do something kind for their community. A quick mention of the public benefits for this, of this project. It advances multiple city objectives. It advances the Washington Realized Strategy. It touches on the housing production strategy. We believe that this model can be used for other projects and will set the tone and be a unique model for future housing production in the city. It also will encourage sustainable mobility systems, which is another key city plan objective. And it supports inclusive economic development by providing modern new housing for residents and workers in the community. As was mentioned earlier and in the staff report, the developer has voluntarily agreed to have all of these units be affordable to low and median household incomes for single-person households. The rents will be starting out at 1150 to 1250 per month, including electricity. And those rents will be committed to for 10 years in the development agreement. There's a maximum of 5% annual increase, and that's due to the utility costs and other operational expenses. The project is also exceeding the city's affordable housing requirements by having 15% of the rents restricted to these low and median income households, 80 and 100% of area median income for 30 years. And that will be both in the development agreement, as well as a regulatory agreement, affordable housing regulatory agreement. In terms of climate action plan goals, as was mentioned, it's all-electric buildings, they're solar-ready roofs, and the developer has done this really of their own volition. They really are committed to sustainability. And this location and the density of this project at 114 units per acre will, and near job centers, will actually advance mixed-use development envisioned in this neighborhood many, many years ago with both the Washington-Specific Plan, as well as the Washington Realized Sustainable Community Strategy. It also will have access to alternative modes of travel. It has electric vehicle charging, e-bike, e-scooter charging. It is proximate to future transit and will support actually the achievement of transit in this district. The other key point that we want to make is that the inclusive economic development strategy of the city, which is, which is really being developed now, is really to encourage people to remain in the community and workers to live in the community. And this project will, by its location, by its density, and by the quality of its design and the environment that it will bring to the community, will encourage people to live and work nearby. And as well as residents that live in the community now, but maybe are first time, you know, moving out of the house, or whether they are moving here to take a job, this will be another attractive opportunity for rental housing in the community that's very high-quality and has a very orientation to leisure and outdoor space through the amenities that are being included in the project. I'll touch briefly on some of the key DA terms. You obviously have the development agreement in your, in your packet. It is a 10-year term with a five-year renewal option. One of the substantial terms in this development agreement is that we are requesting fee reductions and fee relief. And one of the reasons for that really is that, these are micro-units. And this is, the fee studies and NEXA studies that we have are really not, they're based on more of a general parameter. They're based on more of a suburban or larger household size. And so these micro-units, they're a new product. I mean, this project is very unique. The product itself is unique. In the region, micro-units are just taking off. And if we're going to really address housing and housing production and affordability, we believe that these micro-units are going to become more and more prevalent and more of a trend in not just West Sacramento, but in the region. The fee formulas that we have established are really based on, they're not based on urban usage factors, they're not based on micro-units. And so these fee adjustments that we've proposed in the development agreement, we've really looked at each and every one of our impact fees and applied a proportionate share to those fees based on the size of these units and based on the benefits that this project is really bringing to the community. We also want to recognize that it's affordable. It's attainable both, and affordable both through its design, but also through the regulatory agreement. And sustainability benefits and encouragement of transit and multimodal access, we believe brings great benefit to the city and encourages and advances really the Washington Realized Strategy, as well as the waterfront redevelopment goals that we've had for so many years. Just touch briefly on the parking lot. We are going to be requiring through the DA enhanced screening treatment for the parking lot to really make it more attractive and to make it be more of an asset to the surrounding neighborhood. And that would be coming back to the commission within 90 days for review and consideration. And staff will be working with the developer to do that. The project will also be building out the ultimate frontage improvements along 4th and 5th Street. And that includes the sidewalks, the lighting and landscaping that are consistent with the Washington Realized Strategy, which is being developed in the new Washington Plan update. So the development will in fact do those improvements. And then the development agreement provides that the city will reimburse the developer for the portion of those additional improvements that are in the right-of-way. And that's pretty standard. There'll be a developer reimbursement agreement. Just already mentioned the housing obligations. So the entire project really is affordable. All 148 units are affordable through their design and for a period of 10 years, including electricity and potentially other utilities too. We're still working through those reviews. But as well as the 30-year term for the 15%, which is 23 units. In recognition of the affordability and the design and all the benefits that this project brings to the community, we are respectfully recommending that this commission recommend the development agreement to the city council. The developer, Julie Young, is here if the commission has any questions. And I am also available to answer questions, and that concludes my remarks.
Ms. Richards, thank you, Ms. Allen. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing and just ask if the applicant has a presentation or if Ms. Young is just available for comment or questions by the commission.
Thank you. I just wanted to add a couple things to the really great overview that Kathy and Diana presented this evening. Firstly, I really want to thank the city of West Sacramento for being willing to spend the time with us to bring something so innovative into the state of California. And I'm saying the entire state of California because I really don't know where a project like this is being replicated anywhere. And just to give you a kind of a general sense of some really important numbers, the project that we're building is basically being delivered for about a third of the price of typical affordable housing. And that's a staggering number with, that has a staggering capacity to impact housing security as a result of kind of doing this beta test site in West Sacramento. We've seen so much innovation and creative thinking from the city of West Sacramento. It has been really encouraging to bring this project forward to this community in particular. And I just want to sit with that for a minute. I mean, to deliver attainable housing at a unit cost that is a third of affordable housing typical product is pretty, in my mind, staggering with regard to how much of a far-reaching impact we can have when people are able to actually see this project on the ground. The other thing I think that is important to note is even with everything that the city and our development team have worked on in this development agreement, because these are micro-units, the price per square foot of these fees, even with the development agreement that we've worked so deliberately on, still translate to a cost of about $67 per square foot when you also put in the regional sand, county, and school district fees that we will be paying on the project. And there is no way to really balance that. I don't think any greater than what the city has done. You, the team has worked so hard to make this possible. But that's another very staggering number, $67 per square foot in permits and fees overall to bring a project like this to fruition. And I don't think that there's any other project that could bear that type of expense on a per-square-foot basis. So with that, I just, sometimes it's important to highlight the math, as well as to say thank you. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Ms. Young. With that, I will bring it back to the commission. This is the second time that this project has been before us. We heard it just a few weeks ago. And it sounds like it will be coming back at least one more time for, for the enhanced screening for the parking. So, all right, with that, looking to the commission to see if there are any, any questions or, well, questions of staff or the applicant at this time.
May I?
Yeah.
Thank you. A question for staff in our conditions of approval. Number nine, we have the approval expiring two years. And the wording is if the project has not begun operation. But what exactly is that metric? Is it a building permit? Or is it under construction? Or is it open to the public? What's the, what's the mechanism there?
The mechanism for that is generally having the building permits pulled and construction begun.
Okay, and they believe that they can advance the building permit through the city and be under construction in that timeframe? They've indicated that timeline generally?
They've actually already submitted their building permits for initial approval, so.
Great. Okay. Okay, that's wonderful. Another question on timing, and it relates to the relationship of the 30-year affordable commitment and then the 10-year term of the development agreement. So is the 30-year then secured by that separate affordable housing agreement?
Yes.
Okay, and then does that, do we ever see that? Or is that just handled between the city and the developer directly?
That will be prepared before it goes to the city council. So it will be a package that will be included with the city council's consideration of the development agreement.
And that's something that we have, as a city, have dealt with before and you know what hap- this is a question. But we, it's, it's a familiar format and framework. We know what's going on with it and how to deal with it and all the functions that it has to, all the boxes that it has to check.
Yes, yes. It is a, I don't want to say it's a form agreement, but we have used it, it is a standard agreement that is used for affordable housing requirements. And it also allows us the regulatory authority to enforce it and including all the terms and conditions.
Okay.
It's also the rental agreement. So it's, it's affordable housing regulatory rental agreement, as I understand it.
As a matter of fact, the city council just approved an agreement of that nature just last night, as a matter of fact, for another project. So they, they go to council when the municipal code ordinance specifies, you know, like what can the city manager do? And then what has to go to city council? So this one would be going to council, much like the one they did last night. So they say, well, they did last night.
Okay, great. Okay, so the meat of one of my more significant questions really has to do with parking again. And again, Julie and city, this is, I'm, I'm very excited about this project. It's exactly what we need. And it, you know, it meets all the goals of what we're aiming for with this area and with the community's housing needs, you know, this time. My concern is just with parking and what happens to the neighborhood after everybody moves in? And the last time we talked about, when you came to the workshop, we, you know, you talked about exercising a degree of discretion with your, with your tenants about how many cars they have and parking and all of those, the things that may matter after they move in that we no longer control. So I'm wondering, oh, am I breaking up?
No, we can hear you.
Oh, thank you. I'm wondering, will the, will the future residents here be eligible for the parking permits and the, for the B parking permit in this neighborhood?
Good evening, Chair Lebig and commission members. I'm Katie Jacobson, Director of Parking, over the Parking Program for the City and Economic Development and Housing. Currently, there, it is, it isn't fully clarified. Generally, as a role, we have not been providing B permits to new construction, only to existing residents. As part of our further parking implementation program and putting in place urban standards in the Washington District, we'll be refining and updating those policies and bringing them back. But currently, the practice, as I said, is, is that this new construction would not be getting B permits. Of course, guests may park in the street as the general public can, as long as they're abiding by the limits. And ultimately, the plan will be, in fact, because I'm pretty revenue-focused in the parking program, will probably start putting meters in that area pretty quickly.
Okay. Thank you for answering that. You know, my exploration into this is not a criticism in any way to the developers' suggested ratio or the work that staff has done in coming up with this number and allowance for them to have the reduction. It's just the impact on how the, the fabric of the neighborhood works. Watching operations at Capital Yards is a little concerning, but they're a different story. They're larger. They have two bedrooms. They have families and lots of people, you know, co-housing in larger spaces. And that seems to have resulted in just lots of cars parked in the surrounding blocks and clogging up some of the existing housing inventory that some of those houses built so long ago, they don't even have garages, and some of them don't have driveways. And so it's just an area that I would like for everyone to keep in mind going forward. I, by no means am I an expert in any of those matters, but just seeing it, the numbers still cause me a little bit of- I, by no means am I an expert in any of those matters, but just seeing it, the numbers still cause me a little bit of pause. Even if we agree on the thesis that at some point in time, public transit will be available and that at some point in time, you know, people won't be needing cars anymore. It kind of becomes a neighborhood, I don't want the neighborhood to have to shoulder the burden in case the thesis doesn't play out, that people aren't going to be using cars. And again, it's not a criticism of, of any of the numbers as we've calculated them or the proposal. It's just what happens if, you know, what is the protection if in the future that's going on? Go ahead. Did you have a?
I just, if I could, with your indulgence, respond that quickly. I absolutely agree in the goal of parking program and our standards and, and policies need to. The goal should be that we don't have impacts on the existing residents in that neighborhood. But in an urban area like this, we'll probably control a lot of that through enforcement, as I said, and metering and posting limits. And as this project comes forward, we will be implementing a lot of those measures that, that we're not currently doing in order to avoid impacts on that on the neighborhood.
Great. Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much. I know that was more of a statement than a question, but thank you for indulging me in the responses. And it's helpful to know that after we make a decision, that there is still a level of enforcement involvement and, you know, protection maybe is the wrong word, but a management of an issue that we will no longer have any control over. And we don't want to burden the project or, or cause it any problems, you know, out of the starting gate by, by asking it to do more than it's already trying to do. So thank you very much for that. That's all of my questions and comments. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard and Ms. Jacobson. Are there any other questions of the applicant or staff? Okay, at this time, I will close the public hearing portion and bring you back to the commission for deliberation and comment.
I'll, I'll just chime in that, apologies, Aria. And Ms. Young, for, for all of your work to bring this forward to us. I appreciate Mr. Leonard's comments because they're, we, you know, we do want to be cognizant and aware of how the pretty substantially changing densities and the influx of info housing is impacting the Washington neighborhood. But this is exactly the kind of project that's moving us in the right direction. So thank you for your efforts. Huge thank you to staff for working so closely and being so receptive to a project like this. And I am in favor of staff recommendation.
Commissioner Austin took the words right out of my mouth. I was really excited about this project when it was brought before us a month ago, a few months ago. Time flows differently now. I'm, I'm really excited. I'm really happy that there is a focus on low income fam- like low income individuals and the number of low income units. And I am still a little bit weary about the parking situation just because the transit is not really there yet in terms of being able to really live a car free, bike filled, transit filled life, especially if you do, if you are physically disabled. So that's my only concern, but I want to echo Commissioner Austin's thanks and gratitude to staff and to city staff and to the applicant.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Berliner and Ms. Austin. Seeing no other, no other comments coming up. I just, I'll, I'll echo Commissioner Leonard's comments. I have a lot of concerns of the parking and the fact that the transit isn't there yet, as Ms. Berliner pointed out. You know, we're, we're getting there. We're coming along, but you know, nothing's, nothing's a guarantee as far as the mass transit goes. So, so that is, that is my largest, largest concern. So, but otherwise, in favor of the project. Okay, with, with that, so what we're voting on tonight is the sequel analysis, the minor deviations regarding the setback and design. And then the development agreement.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move staff recommendation.
Moved by Mr. Sternfels.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Leonard. Mr. Clerk, can you please do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Austin?
Aye.
Commissioner Berliner?
Aye.
Commissioner Sternfels?
Aye.
Commissioner Leonard?
Aye.
Commissioner Sablon?
Aye.
Chair leaving.
Aye. All right, thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations and good luck. But it does sound like we're going to be seeing this project one more time.
Kathy, did you mention it's in night, within 90 days? So.
That's great. Yeah, within 90 days, so probably by sometime in February.
Okay, and hopefully we will have a commission seated at that time. As, as Mr. Tilly mentioned, applications are open right now. So. Okay, with that, on that cheery note, we will move on to item number four, which is the public workshop regarding the sixth cycle update of the city's housing element. Before we open this up, I want to thank our planning commission housing subcommittee, Aria, Bernadette and Andrew for attending additional meetings on that. And I know there are several staff on the line this evening supporting, supporting this effort as well. So before, before we move into the item, Mr. Clerk, are there any comments, public comments on this item?
Yes, we have one public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Assuming commissioners have had a chance to, to look at that one. The public comments, as noted, are available on the city's website on the planning commission page, where the, where the agenda is. So. So for this one, I am going to turn it over to Elijah Ortega for the staff report.
Okay, thank you and good evening, Mr. Chair Leibig and commissioners. I'm here tonight to present to you the draft housing element update for the sixth cycle 2021 to 2029 planning period. And so just as a refresher, you know, if you recall, I was, I was here before the planning commission in the summer to recruit some of your commissioners to join the Economic Development and Housing Commission in their workshop and their review of this project. So thank you again, like you mentioned, to Commissioners Austin and Sternfels and Berliner for your willingness to join us and to help us in that process. And so I'm going to, well, let's see here. Do we have the presentation ready? Okay, perfect. Thank you, Ben. So great, so I'm going to go ahead and jump just right into the presentation now. And so let's see if we can advance the slide, please, Ben. Thank you. Great. So in your meeting packet for tonight, you did receive the full draft document and associated appendices. And we also did include the red line edits for all the chapters. And you'll notice that you did not, however, receive the red line edits for the appendices. And that was just because they're largely all new in contents and of course in data and analysis. And so what I plan to do tonight is just to go through each of these chapters that you see here and provide a good overview of what you can find. And of course, taking care to highlight some of the significant changes to the documents for this next planning period. So next side, next slide, please. Okay, so just moving on to the introduction. So the housing element is an element of the general plan. And so by nature, it does need to be consistent with the general plan and really should serve to support and strengthen the overarching general plan goals and vision on a housing policy level. And so in other words, support the general plan from a housing standpoint. So now this housing element update was sort of unique in that the general plan was updated and adopted in 2016. And so here we are in 2020, really now just getting a chance to take a look back at the updates to the general plan and communicating those changes into the housing elements. So I know it's, you know, it's a bit strange when you go and seek out the general plan 2035 and you see the date of adoption. And then you see a chapter there that says 2013 housing element. But again, that's just because of the nature of the state law requirements and this eight year update cycle. And so now finally, we get the chance to bring this document up to speed with the general plan. And so specifically, we are looking and focusing on the complete communities and healthy communities and healthy lifestyles that are communicated in the general plan. And of course, taking a deep dive in this housing element into those sustainability goals and climate change readiness goals. But again, from a housing standpoint. Next slide, please. So again, the housing element should of course have synergy between the document and the other general plan elements. And to that point, the housing element does have a significant role in addressing some of those environmental and health and economic issues that are prevalent in West Sacramento's disadvantaged communities. And so one new major update to this round of housing element updates was the focus on environmental justice and equity from an environmental standpoint. And so what we did in respect to environmental justice in this housing element update was to include policies and programs and implementation measures to reduce health risks in disadvantaged communities within the city. And we focused on not looking at just of the location of suitable sites. Or in other words, meaning sites that reduce exposure to actual pollutants. But we also, of course, looked at ways that we can structure our, our goals, policies and programs to provide greater access to public facilities and healthy foods and community amenities. And also to encourage social and civic engagement. And one thing I'll say is that really the timing of this housing element update, coupled with the final report coming from the mayor's commission on climate change, and also of course, the work that's being done with the climate action plan, did put us in a really good position to take a better look at this housing element update from those lens or from that perspective of both of those critical documents and also from an environmental justice standpoint. And so you'll see this communicated a little bit later in the presentation as well. Next slide, please. So this here are some of the major themes that are incorporated throughout the housing element update. And so the focus on neighborhoods and neighborhood identity was really important. And that's something that was also echoed back to us as we engage with the community in outreach efforts. Taking a good look at some of the best practices for streamlining and incentives to make housing development a better and easier process for developers. And of course, identifying and outlining some of those specific city efforts to secure funding and looking at partnerships to leverage some of our avenues and tools that we have as a local government to both create and preserve affordable housing. Next slide. So this again, some additional housing element themes here. Again, in the general plan, we have goals and visions communicated in planning strategies to do things such as grow the downtown core, the waterfront districts and other neighborhoods. And so the creation and preservation of affordable and adequate housing for all residents and income levels, and of course, special needs housing needs is integral to making progress on those planning goals that are outlined in the general plan. Next slide, please. So let's see, so this one here, just to outline some of the state law changes that have affected this round of housing element updates. So one that you may have already noticed here is related to this idea of affirmatively furthering fair housing. And what that essentially is, is fair housing requirements with a bit of a twist. And we'll get into that more specifically towards the end of the presentation because it is actually a new appendix item that you'll see in the housing element draft. Some of the other new state requirements were included related to the streamlining of housing development, funding strategies and planning to create and preserve affordable housing. Of course, another one was adequate zoning to accommodate West Sacramento's arena numbers, which I'll get into in just a bit. And then in certain circumstances, requiring by right developments on identified sites. And I believe I've got a last one here, and that's related to requiring a higher level of documentation of site suitability analysis when we're looking at non vacant sites that are being considered for particularly lower income housing development. Next slide, please. Okay, great. So this here, you will have already seen this in the agenda report. But again, this is the regional housing needs assessment process and the allocation for the city. So we've got just about over 9,400 new residences that we need to plan for in this housing element. And so the city, of course, is not required to construct new housing, right? That's not, that's not our role. But our role is of course to provide for enough housing that is affordable to all households through city mechanisms such as zoning and infrastructure readiness, et cetera. And I'll get into the land inventory that was produced to that end in just a bit here in a, in a few slides later in the presentation. Next slide, please. So this here, this is pretty much answering the question, you know, what are the changes that are coming and what are the changes to the goals, policies and programs chapter specifically? And really, this chapter is the driving force of the document because it outlines and establishes the housing policies for the city. And of course, identifies some of those goals where they can be quantified. So you can see here some of the significant changes to the chapter which the red line edits were actually included in your agenda packet as well. And so we'll start off here with some changes related to sustainability in goal number three. And policy number 1.16 is new in establishing place based mobility strategies for affordable housing. And specific, of course, to, to arena allocation. We'll go over affirmatively furthering fair housing a little bit more, like I mentioned later in the presentation. But again, that is new and that is at its core relating back to fair housing and equal housing access for all city residents. And the focus on infill and compact development in the city's transit priority areas can be seen here in, in program 1.4. Next slide, please. So here are two additional programs, and these are also relevant to the next slide. Where I'll be getting into the requirement of maintaining that internal consistency in both the housing elements and the general plan. But program 3.2, I wanted to call out here, this is another significant change specifically tailored to provide that nexus between the housing element and the climate and sustainability goals in both the general plan and the climate action plan. So focus again here on mixed use and multimodal travel options and transit oriented developments and opportunities in infill areas. And then of course, equally important is a focus on making strides from an energy efficiency standpoint on a housing level. Next slide, please. So internal consistency with general plan and zoning ordinance. So as you will have noticed already, there's actually a chapter specific to identifying internal consistency between the housing element and the general plan. And that's included in the draft documents. The main purpose of this chapter is to outline the ways in which the housing element will work through the general plan and the updated zoning ordinance and also the climate action plan. Right? So all of these documents intersect in various ways. And we've worked in additions here to help strengthen that internal consistency. And we've worked in additions here to help strengthen that internal consistency. So you can see here where we have made additions to address that. And again, really needed to focus this time with this document on internal consistency. On ensuring that the housing element is not just making reference to some of those general plan updates that occurred in 2016. But also looking for opportunities with this document to prop up and strengthen, strengthen those goals as well. Next slide, please. So this one here is really important, community outreach is actually both a chapter in the draft document. And the data from our outreach efforts is also provided as an appendix in the draft. So here are some of the main points related to community outreach that we heard from the housing commission. When we asked them to weigh in on areas of focus for our community outreach. So of course, reaching the general public via social media and online was critical for our efforts. Given the constraints on in person meetings and other physical outreach efforts during COVID nineteen. So what we did was just to take extra care to create an online publicly available survey that was published widely. And that was comprehensive and effective in generating and gathering feedback from the community. So you'll see here, we did receive over four hundred and fifty total survey responses. With over twelve thousand individuals reached on social media. And over five hundred engagements and that just means likes or shares or reposts of those posts related to the survey. And again, you know, we really needed to make sure that we did this correctly. Given the reality of today and that many folks are relying on social media and the internet to receive their important updates. And so, you know, I think that we feel that, you know, this was a success in terms of capturing that valuable community output. And so I would just like to also mention that we did take care to advertise the survey. Outside of the internet and social media as well. So in addition, we included the survey info on a utility bill mailer for October. As well as on the local cable access channel. And we did also ask our stakeholder partners to distribute the survey to their West Sacramento clients and contacts. So moving on to the second bullet point there, another area of focus, an outreach. Was reaching stakeholders that have a social value and that advocate for some of our disadvantaged communities. Or also provide services to them. So this relates more specifically to what we call our stakeholder group. And this group consisted of various organizations from housing providers. And social service providers and other housing interested organizations. As well as specific organizations that are community related. So we included a lot of our local churches there, as you can see. And we did also provide a presentation on the project to the Chamber of Commerce Economic and Government Affairs Panel. And so I've listed some of those folks that we included in our stakeholder group on the right there, just so you're aware. That's not, that doesn't capture all of the stakeholders that we included, but just some that I felt I would like to call out. For this meeting here. Next slide, please. So just a bit more on the community outreach, what we did. As a project team was to organize the feedback that we got from our stakeholder meetings. And the public survey and the virtual public meeting and to track those comments. And group them as they related to various topics. And so we analyzed the amount of feedback that we received on specific topics. And we really tried our best to ask the question, you know, where is this comment specifically addressed in the, in the draft document? And so we did do some one on one meetings as well with a couple of, a couple of our stakeholder groups. And as I mentioned, we held a virtual public meeting just last week. That was attended by about forty participants. Many of those participants on the call last week had little prior knowledge of the housing element update project. And so for that meeting, we really focused on both education and gathering more additional feedback. Except this time, we did that on a live platform. And so what we saw with that small group of participants last week. Was that their comments and feedback on the live meeting did echo in many ways. The same content and feedback that we received from the over four hundred people. And West Sacramento residents that gave input on the public survey. And so just to speak a little bit more about the, the public survey that we conducted. I've got some highlights here towards the right on your screen. From the survey in terms of those major topics that we received input about. So just to highlight some of those, those included larger home lots and single family homes. That are affordable to the middle classes, single family home upgrades and the need for assistance with home upgrades. That includes, you know, home maintenance or city home rehab programs. And then the comments relating to preservation of open space and trails and amenities were really popular as well, as you might imagine. And then of course, another major one was the conditions of our roads and the impacts on traffic that residents are anticipating. When we began to discuss with them, planning for more housing. And then lastly there, you know, the senior housing and the programs to assist our aging seniors. Was another major feedback topic that we received from the community. So really, you know, I think as you can see here, we gathered some really constructive feedback. And what we did was to also note here, the duality of responses and comments from the community that we received. So just for example, you know, if we had ten people comment regarding that, hey, we want West Sacramento to maintain its small town feel. We don't want more housing. On the flip side, you know, we would have had another ten people. Relay back to us and comment that, you know, we need more homes and we need a downtown identity. So again, just some of the duality in those comments. And we did feel that we captured a good cross section of opinions there related to the housing element in our outreach efforts. Next slide, please. So this here is a slide that was actually presented during our virtual public meeting. And so again, what we did in all of our community outreach efforts was to identify the responses that we received from the community. And to ask the question, you know, where can this be addressed in the housing element document? And so this here is just an example of one question that was asked in the survey. And the responses that we received from again, over, over four hundred folks, West Sacramento residents. And then of course, towards the bottom, the ways that we have tried to address that response that they gave us. Next slide, please. So just moving on here, I'm going to do just a very quick debrief of the housing commission meetings. Again, the bullet points on the left are topics that we received feedback from the commissioners. And of course, the guest planning commissioners on. And so the places in the actual goals, policies and programs chapter where those comments are addressed. Can be seen kind of towards the right there. So, you know, we heard some great feedback related to homeownership. And again, you can see the, the goals, policies and programs related to that topic on the right. Again, ADUs were a popular idea and comment from both the commission and the public. TOD or transit oriented development was certainly, certainly a big focus for us on this round of housing element updates. And again, NIMBYism and the ways that we tried during our outreach to strike down. Some of those maybe preconceived notions that folks may have when it comes to more housing in the city. And again, that was actually a big part of our conversation with the virtual public meeting that we held. Next slide, please. So just moving along to a few more highlights here, getting close to the end of the presentation. But we heard some good comments related to prefabricated homes as well from the commission. And I'd like to just say here that the preservation of mobile home parks and our mobile home park strategy. Was also a part of this topic too. The second point here is investments in open space and amenities. Again, that was certainly echoed during our, our community outreach. As it relates to creating communities and neighborhoods where people want to live. And where they can have those recreation and open space opportunities like trails and parks. And then the last one here is the focus on infill areas. And that focus on really developing our underutilized land in the core of the city and also in the eastern parts of the city. Next slide, please. So the last two here, fees and incentives were also brought up in the commission. And you can see a further analysis of this topic actually in appendix A in the constraint section. But again, here's just some of the housing, some of the housing element policies. That relate back to some of that feedback that we received from the housing commission. And lastly, the need for infrastructure is again, an important topic raised by the housing commission and outlined. In our program one point four here relating to the use of EIFD funds. And how that ties into our community investment action plan. Next slide, please. So here we go into the appendices. So I'm just going to do a good run through of what you can find in the appendices of the document. That was included in your packet for tonight. So again, as I mentioned before, many of the appendices require significant updates. And that's because we really needed to take a good look at the data that we were using. And analyzing that data that was used to inform the changes that were made to the chapters of the housing element. So appendix A is the housing needs assessment. And it contains an update of the demographic trends in the city, including population trends, income and housing costs. Special housing needs, housing characteristics. And so our consultant for the project actually did complete a housing condition survey as part of the update this time around. And also identifying any subsidized units at risk of converting to market rate. All those topics are included in appendix A. So I've highlighted some of the takeaways here on the right of the, of the slide. Related to the city's senior demographic and we're seeing, you know, our aging populations increasing. Increase in rental occupancy and some of the challenges that come along with that. Of course, identifying the typical housing costs in the city was really important. And also identifying how much people are being asked to pay for housing in our community. And also how that cost of housing is related to their income and their socioeconomic status. So I think, you know, in our community and in many other communities throughout the state. That gap between those costs for housing and income continues to grow. And so identifying again, some of those groups of our community that may require some special housing needs. Such as non family households and female households, female headed households, excuse me, as well. And next slide, please. So here's appendix B, and that will include the sites inventory and map, which I've also attached here to show you. So the good news is that identified sites are capable of supporting our arena number without the need for rezoning. And with some surplus capacity actually as well. And so again, you'll, you'll see that communicated in appendix B. Next slide, please. And this is another really important portion of the document here. Appendix C contains the summary of performance of previous housing programs. And I wanted to include some info here for you all, just to demonstrate really, you know, the importance of this housing element document. But also to communicate some of the real world impacts that these housing element updates and programs provide to our city. So for example, the city's home buyer assistance program. Five loans in twenty nineteen to our, to West Sacramento residents. And nine loans in the period between twenty thirteen and twenty seventeen, under the first time home buyer program. The inclusionary housing program, actually, you know, we were mentioning that on the previous item. That's been very active in the past years, six affordable housing agreements approved by city council. And those agreements have helped to bring projects off the ground. Such as the permanent supportive housing project that's going vertical, vertical on West Capitol Avenue. And that's eighty five units of supportive housing for homeless or at risk of being homeless, West Sacramento residents. And of course, both phases of West Gateway Place as well, over one hundred new units there. And finally, the homeowner improvement or residential rehab program. So under the neighborhood stabilization programs in the previous housing element. Twenty eight, a single family homes from twenty thirteen to twenty seventeen and two multi family projects there as well. So again, just wanting to communicate some of that performance of our previous programs. You know, as, as we're at the end of our twenty thirteen housing element. It's really important for us to identify, you know, where we've made progress with some of these actual tangible. Statistics and data that are coming out of our housing element programs. Next slide, please. So this one here is actually the last slide, this is appendix D. And this again, as I mentioned, is a new addition for this housing element update. And so for this slide, I'm actually going to have Jeff from our consultant team take the final slide here. Just to explain the new appendix and the affirmatively furthering fair housing. Chapter here before we end up and open up for comments and questions.
Thank you, Elijah. Good evening, planning commissioners. I'd like to spend just a few minutes speaking to affirmatively furthering fair housing. Which is not something new in terms of federal law, it goes back to the nineteen sixty eight Fair Housing Act under Lyndon Baines Johnson. But over the, over the decades, it's taken on, I would say, more expanded meeting. Particularly how we're using it here in California and for this housing element update. And I'll, I'll speak to that a bit in just a moment. And I would invite Matthew, who was one of the key authors to appendix D, if he has any additional thoughts. In addition to my presentation. Interestingly enough, earlier this year, the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. Announced that it was revoking its two thousand fifteen affirmatively furthering fair housing rule and replacing it. With a so called preservation, community and neighborhood choice rule. So although the federal government's gone in a slightly different direction in terms of. The framework for achieving fair and affordable, equal housing opportunity for everybody. California's, I wouldn't say it's gone its own way. Completely, but has taken a different twist and kind of expanded some of the things. That go into affirmatively furthering fair housing considerations. Elijah touched upon those, I'll just elaborate a little bit on some of those points. Among those are doing the research to see if there are segregated communities. How affirmatively furthering fair housing, again, previously called equal housing opportunity. Can contribute to the complete community concepts that are an important part of the general plan in terms of community health. Community sustainability and resilience, social equity. And other key indicators of more broad expansion of fair housing opportunity. It also addresses some of the findings of the draft analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. That was prepared by Sacramento Valley Fair Housing Collaborative and some of the findings that came out of that. And among the important requirements to determine how affirmatively furthering fair housing would apply in West Sacramento. Is an assessment of, excuse me, an assessment of fair housing. And preparing a land inventory and site identification to show where housing, adequate housing for all income levels, socioeconomic levels. And ideally, as much as possible affordability levels can be located. The result of which, which you see on the slide here is to provide equal housing opportunity access, promoting diverse. Inclusive communities and the flip side of that is identifying and eliminating to the greatest extent possible. Segregated communities and providing access to good job, school, healthcare, transportation. And you can read the rest of the list on the slide with the idea of broadening, the idea, broadening. The concept of what fair housing means in terms of striving for greater equality and lower disparities. In who has housing, who can afford housing, where, who can afford where to live in West Sacramento or any community. So the general overview. So the general overview of Appendix D is, it tries to take into account the various types of conditions in West Sacramento with a focus on socioeconomic, environmental exposure to disparities. These are things that are related to affirmatively furthering fair housing. And the data source used, one of the data sources used for that is the tax credit allocation community opportunity map, which you see in this slide. Some of the other sources of information we used to put together this affirmatively furthering fair housing analysis were data, map data from the city of West Sacramento itself, California Department of Housing and Community Development. And you can see the rest of the sources on this list. So it is a significant number and diversity of information sources to make sure that we really covered all of the bases in putting together this appendix and really going as far as we could substantively and factually in really identifying where there still are discrepancies, where there still are disparities in terms of location and access to housing and associated services. And what we need to do then in this updated housing element to begin to address what disparities still remain to be examined and remain to be resolved within West Sacramento. I'll stop there to see if Matthew has any thoughts that he would like to add.
I'll just note for the commission that, as Jeff mentioned, one of the areas of analysis is just looking objectively to see how segregation has changed in a, in the relevant period of study. And I'll just note that for West Sacramento, unlike the rest of the region, since 1990, if you look at segregation, segregation has actually declined. Geographic segregation has declined since 1990 in West Sacramento. And the city does not have any defined racially or ethnically concentrated areas of poverty right now. And that's something that sets the city apart from the rest of the region and many parts of California, actually. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff and Matthew. If we can move on to the next slide, please. Yeah, so Appendix D is the last and final appendix. It's also a new update this time around. So that's why we ended there. But at this point, would like to end the presentation and open up for any comments and questions. And you can also see I've provided an update here on the schedule of this project towards the bottom there. Thank you.
Thank you, Elijah. And Jeff and Matthew, that was a very, very thorough presentation. And I'm sure we all appreciate the detail that went into it. So this, this is a public workshop. So staff is seeking feedback. I think I would like to first hear from Aria Bernadette and Andrew to reflect a little bit on your participation in the housing subcommittee and areas that we should be focusing on, maybe on our comments. It's a big document, so.
I'll go first and turn it over to my colleagues. First of all, I think that Mr. Ortega provided a really excellent overview. And I'm, I am ill-equipped to provide as, as good an overview as you did. So I think he did a really good job of summarizing very specifically when we provided feedback where it manifested in the documents. So thank you for that. Also, thanks to, to the staff at AECOM for their very hard and diligent and fast-paced work on this. And then also, our colleagues at the other commission were really gracious hosts. So it was great hearing their feedback. They were really welcoming. So my general comments at this point are twofold. One is, I think, again, really comprehensive work was done. We did it really fast, but I'm really glad to hear the report back on the community engagement that can be really challenging virtually, could also be really challenging under, you know, fast circumstances. And then, of course, during these crazy times, it's been a pretty wild couple of weeks between the election and holidays and COVID. So thank you for doing that outreach. The other thing that I'll just highlight and I'll turn it over to Mr. Sternfeld after this is, you know, make sure that we provide opportunity for some really substantive feedback. So it may be tonight. I would also encourage people tuning in who have some sort of interest, whether they're members of the public or one of the, for example, nonprofits that we did engagement with. If you have feedback, and just correct me if I'm wrong, there's still an opportunity to provide that in writing. So I think it would be really great possibly to follow up with this particular document and share the contact information perhaps of Mr. Ortega, whoever the appropriate person is, so that someone could then, commissioner or otherwise, submit like red lines or recommended rephrasing for consideration. So I'll pause there and see what Mr. Sternfeld has to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Austin. I do want to echo your gratitude, particularly for Mr. Ortega. He's done a candidly a top-notch job in managing this process. And from the volume of public participation to the responsiveness and planning on all the steps and being a really fantastic communicator, both with the Housing Commission and here tonight with us. I just want to applaud Mr. Ortega specifically, but also the entire team again that worked on this. You know, tonight's a workshop, so, you know, as we've, as we did with the general plan and the zoning ordinance modernization, everything else we went through. I hope the commission has some really good feedback on, on the policy in total. I can tell you that one mark of the quality of the product that's before you tonight is that when I went through it the last time, I literally had like five or six things in the entire document. And most of them were clarifying questions. And Mr. Ortega was tremendously helpful in resolving all of them for me tonight. And I want to thank him again for, I see many changes, well, not many. Everything I asked about has been modified in tonight's version. So I really appreciate the responsiveness on, on that in particular. But I think we've got a great product in front of us and look forward to hearing the rest of the commissioners' comments. But I really think this is responsive to the duality, which is a really great word to talk, to use and put a positive spin on the difference of opinion in this community, but also to address our future housing needs here in West Sacramento. With that, I'll turn it over. Maybe Commissioner Berlin has some more to add, too.
Yeah, I just, once again, want to echo whatever anyone has said. And it was, it's, it's been all, I know it's been a quick process, but it feels a little bit longer just because the document was so, so long. And it's just been an insane and incredible amount of work. So thank you, Elijah, and thank you to the other, the other commission for hosting us. A lot of the questions and feedback that we gave was addressed in the updated, in the, in the new slides. And I just, in particular, one of the things that I recall talking about with the Housing Economic Development Commission was the issue of parking, especially in the Washington District and around Ironworks. Because I know that parking has, is limited there. And it's just, I don't have a good answer because we, you need, like, in order to make it more urban, you need less parking so you can build more things. So I don't have a good suggestion or answer to that. But yeah, thank you, thank you, C staff, for all of your hard work on this.
Thank you. Yes. Okay, with that, I think I'll open up to additional comments. Mr. Blon, sorry, I can barely see you, but I think that's your hand up.
Yeah, so I guess the all-black and the lighting's not very good. Here I am. So I, I was impressed with the document. And as, as my fellow commissioners have already said, a tremendous amount of work clearly went in, into the document. And the appendices and just impressed how you could do the land inventory and all of that. A lot of good work. And, and particularly the public participation, as you've already heard. You did a great job of getting out there during COVID and getting responses and getting the word out. I do have a lot of sticky notes on the document, so I don't, some of them are smaller comments, so I don't know if that would be better to email you those for the smaller ones? And instead of going through each sticky note now, I don't know if there's a process for that.
I'll just chime in that my recommendation, given some of the ways that these have happened in the past, is if you feel like it's pretty insubstantial, I would recommend emailing this information. However, sometimes there are key things where it's a small thing, but there's major energy efficiency implications for it, for example. So if I were you, I would raise like topical things that you think are really, parking is a big one, efficiency is a big one. And then, you know, if there's smaller questions or comments, then just provide that via email. But I should let the staff answer, actually. I apologize.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, certainly, if there's something, again, that you feel that, you know, you'd like to bring up here and now, certainly, please do. But also, I would just like to say that yes, certainly available to email your comments to me. You can, you know, redline what we gave you and you can email that to me. Also, again, to anybody who's on the line from the public or any of our stakeholders, you can visit the Housing Element Update website. And you can email us at housingelements@cityofwestsacramento.com and provide your feedback as well. Just if, again, if community members or members of the public are tuning in now, that's a way. But of course, for the commissioners, you have my email as well. So please do email me with any feedback that you have on the document.
Okay, so I think I'll just go over two points I've had, if I can find them. But so, so one was the homeless services coordination program, so HE 6.1. So in that part of the discussion, it talks about the recent homeless study and developing an action plan. So that looked like it didn't change from 2013. And so I was just wondering, has there already been a plan that's been developed? And does this part need to be updated?
Yes, good evening. This is Raoul. I'm a senior program manager in the Housing Department. I'll try to answer that question. So the city participates in a county-wide continuum of care, which is the, the group that tries to address homelessness issues. Every, every two years, the H-PAC conducts what is called a PIT count, point in time count, to try to assess the number of unsheltered homeless that are in the community and the entire county and conduct surveys of those individuals to get a little bit more information about the needs of those individuals. Obviously, housing is, is, is the obvious need, but some of them may need other types of mental health or, or other types of resources. So we do, we do that biannually. But, you know, I can say that it's an ongoing process. You know, the issue of homelessness is very complicated and, and one that is not easily resolved in, in, you know, one study or biannual study. So it, that's why we, we have the continuum of care in the H-PAC that meets every month to discuss the issues and the resources that are available for these homeless individuals. And the H-PAC is comprised of all the members of, of the cities in the county and service providers, most importantly, service providers that are out there on a daily basis, reaching out to these homeless individuals and making contact with them, trying to find them resources, making sure that they are included in the county's health management information system, the HMIS system, to make sure that we can try to track them so that we can provide the services that, that they need. So I'm not sure if that directly addresses your question, but that is, you know, certainly a very complicated issue and something that we're always looking at ways to, to deal with. As Elijah noted, the permanent supportive housing project on West Capitol Avenue that is scheduled to be completed around the third quarter of 2021 is specifically for homeless individuals. So that's going to be 85 units of permanent supportive housing that's being built by Mercy Housing, California. Not sure if you were able to see the council meeting last night, but last night, the council approved the acquisition of the roadway in to convert it to interim housing for homeless as well. So those individuals that are currently being housed at the roadway in are part of the state's project room key. And they will be transitioned into home key. So the city is in the process of acquiring that site. We got the formal approval from the council. So again, those are just ways of, of making sure that we are trying to serve the most, you know, one of the most vulnerable populations in the county.
Okay, yeah, that is definitely helpful here. And I think that's what I was getting at, the more recent actions the city has taken to address homelessness and how those goals can be incorporated in here. But it sounds like that goes through the H-CAP program?
And. A lot of it does, yes. A lot of the planning is done, you know, homelessness is not just a city of West Sacramento issue, right? It's, it's a county-wide, regional issue. And that's how we try to address it because, you know, we can't just act in a vacuum. You know, it's, it's a regional issue and that's how we, we need to tackle it. So that's why we have that, that H-PAC meetings to make sure that we are listening to the service providers especially and, and the services that we can try to make available to, to, to these residents.
Thank you. And then, there was a specific reference to a city action plan. And it looked like there was one developed in 2013. Has that been superseded by actions with the county through H, H-CAP or H-PAC? Sorry.
H-PAC, correct. I believe, yes. I believe that has not been updated. That document was created back in 2013 as a, you know, at the time, as a starting point to try to organize better countywide. I think for many years, there hasn't been a lot of coordination and organization throughout the county with service providers and cities. And I believe that was somewhat of a starting point to make sure that, that was changing. And, and, you know, the, the cities and the county and the service providers have been working towards that since, since then.
Okay. Thank you. And then, so the other thing is, I found the table at the end of the document really helpful, the summary with all the programs. And I don't know if that's something that can go up front just to guide the public, the reader, to have that upfront of, here's everything digestible right here. And maybe incorporating the policies in there as well. But I found that table incredibly helpful. And I think I will, I will turn it over. Whoever wants to speak next. I'll, I'll send you more comments. Again, impressed with the document. If I see a sticking, touches my eye before we close out, I'll raise that again.
And just to try to answer again, your question that you posed earlier, I think anything that is policy-related, we really do want to hear about it tonight. You know, so I think that's what Commissioner Austin mentioned is very true. You know, something that you, you, maybe it's just a clarification. Certainly, feel free to email us and we will correct it or look into it. But if it's policy-related, we. But if it's policy-related, we probably should be getting that feedback during this workshop.
Okay, yeah, I will scroll through my sticky notes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Swan. Commissioner Leonard.
Hello, I have a couple of things. I think this first one would be directed probably towards Elijah. And I'd like to have a very brief conversation about the, the capacity or the ability of our infrastructure to accommodate what we've identified in our RENA sites. We've got all this new housing available. And if someone else is qualified to weigh in on the discussion, please, I'd like to have a conversation about it. That we identify, is it 12,000 units, something plus in, in RENA capacity? But what about the pipes and the street network, or the pipes under the ground and the street networks' ability to accommodate that development? Further, seeing some of those sites identified, some of them look like larger swaths of land in parts of town that might be infrastructure limited. Others might be in areas that might require a sewer line up sizing. And, and so my, my general open-ended question to you or to anyone else who can answer is, where do we tie in the, the, the planning for that infrastructure to match and support the RENA needs and those abilities of those sites to actually develop?
Yeah, I think that's an excellent question. Thank you, Commissioner. I do believe that Matthew may be better suited to kind of explain the methodology that went into that. Because certainly, the, you know, identifying the current infrastructure and also the capacity for future infrastructure was certainly part of that methodology. So, you know, if, if Matthew has anything to say about that, I know Kathy Allen as well was really helpful in developing that, that specific appendix for us and for this project.
Yes, thank you for the question. The shorter answer is that the city has relatively up-to-date infrastructure master plans that happened after the 2016 general plan update, which chose land use designations. And then came the zoning ordinance update. And this housing element has the blessed situation of not having to direct additional land use designation changes or zoning changes to accommodate the RENA. So it's a much different situation. If the RENA comes along, it's a big, huge number, and you have to go back and amend the general plan and go through a bunch of rezonings and find infrastructure, infrastructure capacity to go along with that. In this case, that's not true. And you'll see a discussion in the housing element of constraints, including infrastructure constraints that detail master plan updates. And you'll see also that our site's inventory map actually shows the presence of the wet infrastructure lines that are right up next to the housing sites that are shown and documented. So the shorter answer is those do not appear to be issues in the way that they are in some communities where we work.
Great, great to hear. I'm glad to hear that we are at least are able to identify a concrete ability to actually meet those needs versus those just being, you know, schemes on paper or abstract ideas that have no way of being accomplished without significant changes and significant financial commitments to expand infrastructure or put it on the backs of the developers who are doing those sites, especially when we're talking about affordable housing. But we know that there's an ability for these things to actually come out of the ground as it stands today versus having to revise our whole, you know, network to accommodate it. So I'm glad to know that there's some reality behind the ideas. So I just, I want to shift just a little bit. And, and it's maybe this one is more for our commissioners and those who sat on. Excuse me, are you guys able to hear me? My internet seems to have frozen.
Yeah, we can still hear you.
Thank you.
You're coming through fine, Brandon.
Thank you. So I'm reminded of our, of our, some of our recent hearings where residents have been very upset about development proposals near their neighborhoods that maybe didn't match their community character or maybe there was some NIMBYism or maybe the style or the form of a certain building or a certain mixed-use development didn't match with what was happening right next door. You know, the idea of this, this plan, this housing element is to try to identify programs where we can address affordable housing and remove, you know, government constraints that slow that stuff up. And, you know, we identify ways where we can relax development standards and give density bonuses and other incentives to actually help that housing come to fruition. And yet, we turn around after doing all that great work, and then something happens in our community that aligns with all of those objectives and takes advantage of all of those opportunities, as it should. That's what the structure is, that's what we're providing for. And you have your community up in arms, upset with you, and not understanding the full framework of what is going on. I think earlier Elijah and Commissioner Stromphels used the term duality in responses to comments. I found it interesting that, and I'm just going to cherry pick two very small details. Interesting that there were 88% of the respondents on the community outreach were, were residents of single-family dwelling units that had yards or lots and that owned their homes. And, you know, we talk about all of our, our transit-oriented development and what we're aiming for in a kind of a different mindset and a shift to density. And you have people who, you know, some of those respondents that chose to live in West Sac, fewer than 3% of the people who chose to live in West Sac did so because of transit. And the reasons for people being dissatisfied living in West Sacramento from this survey were that they needed more space in their yards or in their homes. They, they, they were dissatisfied with West Sacramento because of proximities to neighbors and because of higher densities and because of concerns with new development. So when it comes to outreach and the housing element, some of these responses just seem counter to all of the things that we're trying to do. So how do we, as leaders of our community and commissioners, deal with that? How do we get the message out? And how do we position everything? How do we inform our residents about what has to happen on our end to allow for housing and be advocates for that? And make sure that people understand that this is not your, you know, this is not your sequel from 15 or 20 years ago, that you can go and fight and hold up a development project forever. What all can we do? This is an open-ended question, and I hope I'm not, you know, too long-winded in getting to this point. But I think it's really important because as this housing element becomes real and the community starts seeing the results of the work that you all have done. It's excellent work, and it's, it meets all of the needs and it removes the barriers for affordable housing. And when those things start happening, we're going to be faced with some, some unpleasant responses. Not all growth is comfortable to all people, and you're not ever going to be able to make all people happy. But I just am curious how we, I just, I need help understanding what we can do in making sure that people understand that even though some of these responses and some of this attitude that we don't want this type of development in our neighborhood or we can do it somewhere else, just not here, how we sort of address that as leaders in the community and as a commission? And, and how we talk about new development projects that come to us that meet all of these housing element goals and take advantage of the processes that we've streamlined for them? Does anyone care to take that on?
Um, I just want to say that's a really, really good question. I, I don't know how to take it on because I think that the city did a really good. I think it comes, it just comes down to awareness of what the city is doing. And I think that the city did a great job advertising and trying to get community involvement. Obviously, in the current climate, you know, they weren't able to hold workshops or public forums at, you know, the more densely populated areas or in the areas of town where English is not spoken at home or anything like that. And so this may not have been the best time to do something like this, but I think that there's, it's a really good question, and it's just, there's just no way, given, given the circumstances, there, I don't know if there would have been a better way to do it, at least in terms of community involvement. Because you're right, with the high number of people living in single-family homes.
88% of the responses, yeah.
So, but I think, but I think also renters may not be as engaged because they don't see living here as a permanent, like, they don't see this as a permanent thing. So it's, yeah, that's, that's why.
Yeah, I would just like to chime in there. I do think that, you know, you raise a really important point and a really important topic for us to think about as, you know, we're reviewing this document and we're looking at what's being communicated in this housing element update. You know, I will say that certainly that was, that was one of the challenges that we had on the community outreach side is really getting that feedback from renters or folks in apartments. And so, you know, again, that was, that was something that was difficult as we were engaging with the public. But I will say that, you know, at least on our end as a project team, again, you know, we recently held that virtual public meeting, and it was a, it was a live forum. And again, what we really tried to do there was to educate, as I mentioned in the presentation, is educate the public and really kind of try to clarify things for them. And in many ways, strike down some of their maybe preconceived notions about what this document is doing and, and how high-density development and infill development will impact them. So, you know, again, that was really, really an important part of our virtual public meeting was that education and engagement. And again, really trying to strike down any preconceived notions because a lot of folks, you know, that responded to our survey, you know, when, when we start to discuss things like planning for housing, you know, the first thing that's going to come to mind is, well, that's more people, that's more impacts on our roads, et cetera. So again, I think that, you know, really as a project team, we really tried to take that input that we were seeing with the survey and communicate and again, educate as best we could during our virtual public meeting just, just last week. And that's just, you know, obviously just one small component of getting to that bigger question that you raised. So again, I do think that that's a very tough question, but certainly has to be thought about.
I can chime in here, but I want to provide a couple of contexts and then one piece of advice. So, so one piece is historic. When we've had, when we've had engagement in person pre-COVID around the general plan update and the zoning modernization project, like, we still got tons of participation and people were still upset with the outcome. So you can't, you know, happy. So the reason I was kind of lauding that, I was like, we actually had positive turnout. But I agree that frankly, there's never enough. And then to provide geographic context, and you've probably heard me say this before, it's totally not what, at all, what members of the public want to hear, particularly the ones who feel so inclined to participate in our meetings. I'm like, this is not a West Sac issue. We, we have to deal with this statewide. And so what I tell folks is, if you move, you're like, that's it, I'm moving out of West Sacramento, Folsom is densifying, Davis is densifying. So it's, it's not like, oh, I'm going to move because these places are, you know, so it's hard to provide that context. They don't really like hearing that. But the context is, it's not just a unique to West Sacramento problem. And then my advice is to look at some of what affordable housing organizations, looking at their messaging is really helpful. So some of the things that, that the mayor will talk about is he'll talk about how we can't attract restaurants and cool stores if we don't have enough rooftops. So like, I know you really want a Trader Joe's, and Trader Joe's won't come here until we have more households, a larger population, living in proximity to where their potential site would be. Another thing we talked about too is if you don't create enough affordable housing, whether that's capital A deed-restricted affordable housing or affordable housing that's affordable to middle-class families and households, then we won't have, for example, enough kids to populate our schools. And so, you know, there's, there's, there's a lot of, or we can't have our seniors continue to live here. So like, as our parents age, they may have to be, they may have to move out of this area due to cost of living. Or as we have our adult children growing up, they may not be able to afford living here. And by doing that, we create opportunities for our family. And then also, another piece of messaging is, where do you think your barista and your preschool teacher are going to live? Want them to live in your city? So they have, there's all sorts of really great messaging, and it's not only us as planning commissioners. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a hard one. It's a really tough nut to crack to let people know that change is hard. And, and there's a lot of things that, you know, that are really uncomfortable about it. So I don't know, I see Commissioner Sternfels has some other pieces to add to.
Yeah, just two quick things on this point. One, I want to differentiate between your comment, Commissioner Leonard, which I think was more about the future, and Commissioner Berliner's comment about the public participation for this process. I think the public participation in this process was really excellent and couldn't, couldn't have been better, especially given the circumstances. I think to the, to the broader challenge of, you know, how do we deal with this moving forward? I think one thing we have playing to our favor is if you look at where most of these sites are, they're also not where most of those survey respondents live. And lucky for us, most of them are infill sites in areas of town that don't have a large population now and have other things kind of trending in their direction. So I think the 88% of those respondents, you know, the 50% of those who, you know, don't want additional development or, you know, those things, all they really care about is Jefferson not being backed up at the highway. And these developments are not going to impact them. They are going to impact some of those residents who are, you know, living in some of the older parts of town, particularly in the Washington neighborhood, and that's where we've seen residents come out particularly concerned about parking. And, but there, there's going to be a smaller number of folks. And, you know, I think to our benefit, the quality of projects we've seen coming into that neighborhood, you know, it really makes it, while still a difficult decision and a painful one, I'm sure the one that has, has short-term pains for some of those residents when it comes to parking and things like that. The long-term benefits are so clear and our policies are so clear. And particularly this policy, this set of policies is so clear that kind of going backwards on any particular project is really difficult to do.
Yeah. Okay. That's great.
So, I was going to say, Commissioner Leonard. So there's, there's a great deal of balancing going on with, it's a lot of complex land uses and projects. I know Commissioner Sternfels used the term lucky. I, I don't think it's lucky. We've been working on this for, for years. There's a variety of housing needs. There's a variety of housing types planned. I think it's absolutely amazing that we can meet arena targets without rezoning. I think that's huge. I also don't think we're lucky in that because I, when we were doing our general plan updates and zoning, there was a lot of foresight going into where, where are we going as we approach 2035? And, and there, there are needs for single-family, large, large homes, you know, big lots. And there are plans for those. Several of them are stalled. It's not the city's job to build. It is the city's job to allow development and to guide the development. And we have, we have developments that are poised to, to, to build down in Southport for single-family homes. down in Southport for single family homes on large, large lots. One of the first projects that I think was thrown at me when I joined the planning commission in, this is scary, 2007, was Yarborough. That is still poised to go. And I think they're, you know, they're still hoping to move forward on that. And that's, you know, that is the, these types of projects. So we, we have a variety of housing coming up and there's a variety of housing needs. And that's usually how I answer, answer the question. It's not everybody can afford single family homes and not everybody needs them. In fact, the, the demand right now is for smaller, smaller units. Equally also single family homes, but. I didn't want, I just wanted to chime in on that, that one, one topic. But as you've noted, there, there's always someone upset about change and new development. So it's just how it is, but people are moving here.
Yeah, and I suppose for the, just the greater good and to remind myself too, as a commissioner, as, as we have more projects. Again, we're clearing the way for them to, to expand and grow. And we're going to be seeing a lot more proposals for this near a lot more existing residents. And that we, in our discussions and our deliberations, we don't just say, hey, we think it's a great project, approved. Or we don't like it, it's not approved. To express our values as a commission and the values that are now indoctrinated or will be indoctrinated in the housing element, the general plan to those people. And you know, it may land on deaf ears, but at least we're reinforcing the concepts that the committee have, Stromphels and Berliner and Bernadette have all put forth and staff put forth in this document that we're reminding everybody. You know, we're bringing them back to the source when we did all this work and got the community input. And that those values shine through, not just in writing, but in interfacing with them as we approve projects that could be controversial and will upset people and they still won't listen in some cases. But when they do, maybe there's a little bit more understanding and a little bit of growth that can happen there. And understand that in West Sacramento, we mix it up. I mean, we're not, we're not a stratified city. Like we, we have, Russ, like you said, a lot of different housing needs and a lot of different housing types provided. And we're doing that every day, every, every time we have a meeting, we're, we are proving something that is slightly different and slightly new and kind of cutting edge or not really done here. So it's, it's great. It's great to see, just want to remind everybody to talk about that and break, back each other up when we're discussing those values when we're approving projects or disapproving projects and soliciting many input and responding, responding to people. So that was it. Thank you for indulging me. I don't, didn't mean to make this meeting go longer than it had to. I just think it's so important because this is such a pivotal document. And that will, that we'll be using as our constitution, I suppose, going forward.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely no, no need to apologize. This is why we're here. These are, these are the important, really important means. It's not like our other ones are not important, but this is, this is very important. Other, other comments? I was gonna try and kind of wrap it up. Oh, Commissioner Sternfels?
I did have one quick one and, and Mr. Ortega, it's a quick follow up on our email exchange regarding policy H E P dash one point one six. One, I want to thank you for the changes that I see in here, kind of broadening the scope of types of services and amenities we want to try to create in close proximity to our affordable housing projects. You had asked me if there was any particular types of services I wanted to make sure and highlight. And while you added several, there's two in particular that I wanted us to think about tonight. One is, is food. And because you call, you called out shopping, but I actually would prefer to call out food. Cause when we think about food deserts, we see a lot of them are in our lower income areas. And, and so I want to be, I want to be intentional about that. The other one is healthcare services. Cause that often tends to be a lacking need in, in certain areas of town, depending on income levels. And then childcare, I know we didn't mention schooling, but we didn't mention childcare. And that was the third one I wanted to throw out just for consideration. So to the extent we can try to incorporate those specific adjectives or something akin to that, I'd be appreciative.
Yeah, I'd like to jump in on that a little bit, please. A lot of those topics we have addressed in the other parts of the general plan, especially the healthy community element where a lot of those, those themes, you know, reside around the food deserts, healthcare access, things like that. And it also goes a lot toward the public comment we got on this item tonight about the, you know, the fruit trees and as, as a food source. So we have attempted to address a lot of that in elsewhere in the general plan. But there's, you know, there should be some, you know, correlation with the housing element in those topics as well.
Agree, and if we've got specific places we can reference. I just know Mr. Ortega did a lot of work to try to make that specific policy number clear in what we were trying to focus on. And so I wanted to offer those specific pieces because I think when we look at low income areas and kind of map out where the amenities are near them, those are often the ones that are, are missing, are furthest away. And, you know, when we're talking about low income housing, I want to make sure we're also being mindful of the, you know, the specific services that any resident would need availability of them.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll chime in with kind of my favorite topic. So thank you for bringing up that. I definitely wanted to make sure that we addressed what I thought was really valuable public comment. And I also wanted a second, two things that were important to me were open space and health. And I think we've been a good job of discussing that today. So I just wanted to talk about AFFH again, so affirmatively furthering for housing. So this is a topic really near and dear, near and dear to my heart. So bear with me, I won't take too long, I promise. So there's graphs and charts throughout particularly the appendix that really talk about the demographics of our community. And I wanted to note that, I don't want to say that I'm not concerned, but I'm less concerned about displacement and gentrification by race, and I'm more concerned about the socioeconomic. And so I'm kind of seeing somewhat disturbing trends of the squeezing of our middle class, which is really, which is something that you're seeing again in many, many communities. West SAC actually has a very robust middle class, but that's something that I definitely want us to flag. So, so throughout some of the numbers from the housing element, the draft housing element is that we saw forty one percent increase in households without or making over a hundred thousand a year. And we saw twenty two percent decrease in households that were determined to be essentially very low income, making between twenty five and fifty thousand a year. And that sort of trend is really disturbing to me. It, that to me tells me that we are either forcing these communities out or they're unable to afford the housing that they're currently in. And even if it's not in an individual household, we're seeing that that income level may be challenged in finding housing rental or own ownership in our community. So I really want us to be really thoughtful there. Related, I wanted to highlight that some of the maps really show, when we looked at the opportunity maps from the tax credit allocation committee or TCAC, they were showing that some of the highest displacement risk in our community is in that sort of northeast part of town. So wanted to flag that's, that's Washington district and that's what I imagine. And so that's where a lot of our new info is going in and why I feel really strongly about having housing that is affordable, affordable by design. And I think that we've worked really hard to address that. I mean, we have two great examples of affordable housing in those areas. So kudos to the city about, you know, being proactive, seeing kind of reading the tea leaf, seeing the writing on the wall and helping address that. So let's continue to do more of that. And then I think the last thing I'll, I'll kind of talk about on this topic is, oh no, two pieces. One of the reasons for that is it speaks to why we got such a high allocation of housing. We are very close to job centers. And so I know COVID changes everything and I'm aware of that. But the truth of the matter is that still the job centers remain in downtown Sacramento and we are so close. I mean, if you look at, you know, West Sacramento compared to neighborhoods within the city of Sacramento, we are closer than Natomas and Oak Park to the downtown. And so just being really aware that that's a really great benefit, but also that's going to further put those communities at risk for being displaced and having high housing costs that we really, that are unaffordable for middle income households. And the, so the last piece I wanted to just kind of talk about again is around the affirmatively furthering for housing. And to provide a little bit of context, this was something that was pushed really hard under the Obama administration. When the Trump administration came in, they basically unraveled that, that, that requirement. However, the state of California was really aware of how important that policy was. We have state policies, but I mention this because I can see that if, assuming we have a Biden administration, I could see possibly some additional federal attention being paid to how important it is to make sure that we are not just integrating our communities, but making sure that we're being inclusive as we move forward. So kudos to, you know, those, those efforts on the part of the state and also the city to continue to build again, a community that's really inclusive. So I think I've hit all the pieces that I wanted to talk about, just flagging that the housing element doesn't just end. The housing element is sort of a guide to us. I really appreciate Commissioner Leonard's discussion on how are we going to address when concerns come up? Because they're, they're valid. I mean, I do understand people are concerned about congestion. They are concerned about losing open space near their homes. These are valid concerns, however, and I've said this also before, not very, it's not very popular. But, you know, the rights of the many can't be superseded by the inconvenience of the few. Like we really have to think about that. Like, yeah, you might be a little bit inconvenienced, but in the long term, we got to think about what's really best for our city and the people who will be living here into the future. And I do think that for me, in the short and near term, we really want to be thoughtful in making sure that when we look at developments, particularly in those areas that are, that we, we see as potentially prone to gentrification and displacement, that we're really being proactive. So, so far you're doing a great job to not just folks who are working in the planning departments, but certainly in economic development. I think you're really, you really have an eye to this and I appreciate that. So those are the things I really wanted to, to hammer home and I'm happy to provide my, any comments via email. But really, it's really well done. So thank you all for, for the efforts that went into drafting this document, making edits along the way.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. Any, any follow up remaining comments? Okay, I cannot summarize all that. So I hope someone else was taking notes. There, there is an incredible amount of information in this document. It is just rich with information and it is very easy to tease out items and grasp onto those. But as I was looking through it, it just, I noticed there's a balance, you know? There's a balance of requests, a balance of, you know, why are you dissatisfied? That one, by the way, is sticking in my head. You know, it's four percent, that four point seven percent, I think that are dissatisfied. And you know, I was like, damn, I was like, that's too much. Anyway, there, you know, the, the reasons vary across. So one, one point I wanted to emphasize, our ability to meet the regional housing needs depends on transit oriented development and transportation projects. And we are approving projects that are going to be burdensome on neighborhoods if we don't move forward with transportation projects. So, so we need to be cognizant of, of the cart and horse here. Right now, we're, we're moving housing projects forward with the assumption that those transportation projects are coming. And, and should that thesis not come to fruition, we will have, we will have some problems. And, and we're going to have a hard time meeting some of our development goals. So the last thing that I, by the way, y'all hit most of them. And so I've been crossing them off the list. So, but one of the last things I wanted to bring up, fees and affordable housing. And I know staff pointed to the enhanced infrastructure finance district or EIFDs as a way of reducing the fees. In fact, we looked at that this evening as some of the fees were reduced for affordable by design and to, to allow for the affordable housing commitments of the city helped reduce those fees. And I believe the EIFD had a, had a role in that. Yeah, EIFD does not have a lot of money. Wish it had more. But something that Bernadette said kind of stuck to me, stuck with me. You know, it's like, where are we focusing this? And it's, the Washington district has high fees and therefore benefits from fee reductions, probably more than other areas like the bridge district. I'm nervous about putting all those fee reductions all towards low, low income in that area. And what does that do to that, you know, to that community? As Bernadette pointed out, where we actually have a shortage or we may be squeezing out our, our mid income as well. And so that was one of my concerns is how we're approaching that. And I don't think it's clear and I don't think it's been clear from the EIFD board on that one either. So, you know, Commissioner Sternfels has a look on his face. No, okay. So that was one of my concerns is how, how are we approaching that? For, for the, the community and those community needs. So generally, I think this is a fabulous document. It's got so much information and will, will be a guiding tool for, for us. Thank you so much.
It's a, thank you, you know, for, for all the great feedback, all the members of the commission. I think we've, we've got some things to think about as well. I just want to remind you that we are going to be back to the planning commission on December 3rd. And so again, please do feel free to reach out to me with any comments that you haven't brought up tonight on the meeting.
Okay. With that, we'll close this public workshop and move on to general administration function, part two informal discussion.
Okay, I'll, I was debating whether to show. So we're, I'm, I'm part of this group called the California Planning Roundtable and it's a think tank that's comprised of members of the California Chapter of the American Planning Association. And we just released a report called Planning to House California Beyond 2020. It's got seven key recommendations and we've basically hit all of them. So again, that's thanks to the city staff and our consultants. But so I think what's great is I think that we're, our city is really working hard to be at the forefront of leadership in this area. But I'll, I'll be happy to share it possibly via Ben or just, you know, you know, it's out to planning commissioners because it's a, it's a valuable tool. It kind of goes to what Mr. Leonard was talking about. So anyway, there's, there's that. Yeah, thanks.
I would like a copy. And thank you for, yeah, sitting on another board. Okay, with that, I will, oh wait, I'm not going to seek a motion to adjourn. I am just going to close tonight's planning commission meeting. So thank you, everybody stay safe, have a good evening.
And have a great Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, bye.